Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Kelly. I'm the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners for Johnson County, Kansas. We are here for a joint meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, sitting as the governing Board of Fire District Two, as well as the, with the Fire District Number One. At this time, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
She is here in the building.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
I am here as well. We have all county commissioners present and accounted for in a duly constituted meeting. I'll now turn it over to Chairman Dravetta for Fire District Number One to call their roll.
If clerk would please call the roll for Fire District One Board.
Vice Chair Burdowski.
Here.
Board Member Casey.
Here.
Tamela Stockton is absent. Secretary Treasurer Walker.
Here.
And Chairman Dravetta.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. If those who are so able would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Consolidated Fire District Number One represents the consolidation of Fire District Number One and Fire District Number Two, which is effective January 1st of 2026. This afternoon, the governing Board of Fire District Number One will hold a public hearing to allow taxpayers to comment on the proposal to exceed the revenue neutral rate throughout the 2026 budget. Following this, the Board of County Commissioners will act as the governing Board of Fire District Number Two and conduct a public hearing for taxpayers to share their thoughts on the proposal to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the 2026 budget for Fire District Number Two. Finally, in its capacity as the governing Board of Consolidated Fire District Number One, the Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing for taxpayers to discuss the proposal to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the 2026 budget related to Consolidated Fire District Number One. We'll start this business session with a PowerPoint presentation from Jim Francis, our Fire Services Administrator. Mr. Francis.
Chairman Kelly, Chairman Dravetta, board members back there.
Do you have your mic on?
No. It wasn't on. Sorry, I thought the light was on. Okay, we'll just do an overview of where we're at with this budget, the combined budget. So the first chart on the left is the consolidated mill levy within the District One area, and I should state that that does not reflect the city of Gardner. Their levy's slightly over 15, and the reason is Gardner residents don't pay one of the existing District One bond issues. That's the reason behind that. But as you can see on that chart, the levy right now with bond debt is 16.9. This reduces their levy to 16.266. And then the chart on the right is the District Two side of the line with a present tax levy of 15.264. For most residents, with the exception of the Miami County portion of City of Spring Hill, they don't pay any bond debt of the district, so their levy would be 13.724. And then it takes that levy down to 15.016. You can see that 14,954,956 in general fund ad valorem tax dollars with a published mill levy for the general fund of 13.724. After pending exemptions, we anticipate that that might land around 13.768. And then the next two items on there is the bond service, debt service for Bond A with District One and Bond B. You can see one of those is 1.352 and 1.190, and Gardner pays Bond B, not Bond A, just for point of clarification. And then the District Two bonds are the two lower ones, the 2015 bond of .535 mils and the 2021 bond for District Two, .757 mils. See, the revenues, I just talked about the ad valorem taxes, but other revenues, you know, we have slightly over a million in motor vehicle and related taxes, and then Miami County agreements, two agreements, just under half a million. And should note there, the big thing on there, the 2.3 million is a transfer, is the anticipated fund balance for District One at the end of this year, and that money would be transferred into the new consolidated district, and we're estimating that at 2.3 million. And then the same thing occurs with District Two, the anticipated fund balance at the end of the year with around 2.7 million. So then we have pilot payments or payments and lieu taxes of 525,000, and then interest payments of 300,000. Go ahead. So our employee expenses, 10,800,000 contractual, 63750, and going on down, the biggest item on there is probably the, beside the employment side, is 3,630 for the Overland Park contract. And then that 5 million represents, the unclassified contractual represents that money coming in from District Two and District One that I just mentioned, that's the 5 million there. Total expenditure is 22,365,305. And as I indicated a little bit ago, that's a property tax reduction for District One residents, not in the city of Gardner, I should state, .634 reduction, transferring fund balance 2.3 million. And then in District Two, a total levy of 15.106 with a reduction of .248. Is that it?
Yep.
So I would stand for any questions regarding that.
Thank you very much. I'll be turning it over to Chairman Dave Dravetta for action items number one and two. The Board will be taking no action and making no comments on items number one and two.
At this time, we will open the public hearing and allow time for anyone to speak on this specific item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will continue to close the public hearing. At this time, I'll offer the Fire District One Board opportunity to speak. That being the case, if you could please read the resolution.
Resolution Number 2025-0003, the governing Board of Fire District Number One hold a public hearing on the proposed budget and to exceed the revenue neutral rate and consider adopting Resolution Number 2025-0003, authorizing a levy of property taxes in support of the budget for Fire District Number One for the fiscal year 2026 budget year that requires a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate of 1.339 mils for the Fire District Number One Debt Service Bond A Fund and 1.049 mils for the Fire District Number One Debt Service Bond B Fund.
Thank you. Excuse me, but I do need to reopen the public hearing so we can vote during the public hearing.
And then you reread the motion again in the public hearing.
Okay.
So if you're reopening it.
Yep. Resolution Number 2025-0003, the governing Board of Fire District Number One hold a public hearing on the proposed budget and to exceed the revenue neutral rate and consider adopting Resolution Number 2025-0003, authorizing a levy of property taxes in support of the budget for Fire District Number One for the fiscal year 2026 budget year that requires a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate of 1.339 mils for the Fire District Number One Debt Service Bond A Fund and 1.049 mils for the Fire District Number One Debt Service Bond B Fund.
Thank you. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-0003.
I'd like to make that motion. Sitting as governing Board of Fire District One, I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2025-003, authorizing a levy of property taxes in support of the budget for Johnson County Taxing District for the fiscal year 2026 budget year that requires a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate of 1.339 mils for Fire District One Debt Service Bond Fund A and 1.049 mils for the Fire District Number One Debt Service Bond Fund B.
Is there a second?
Brian Walker, I second the motion.
Please call the roll.
For the roll call vote, Mark Burdowski.
Aye.
Brian Walker.
Aye.
Mike Casey.
Aye.
And Chairman Dravetta.
Aye.
I show for and none against.
Motion passes. At this time, I will close the public hearing. Okay, we'll now present item number two, Resolution Number 2025-004.
Resolution Number 2025-0004, the governing Board of Fire District Number One, consider approving and adopting Resolution Number 2025-0004 to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget for Johnson County Fire District Number One as proposed.
I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-0004.
I'll make that motion. Sitting as governing Board for Fire District Number One, I move to approve and adopt the Resolution 2025-004 to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget for Fire District One as proposed.
Excuse me, that's 2025-0004.
Is there a second?
Brian Walker, I moved to second the motion.
Please call the roll.
For roll call vote, Mark Burdowski.
Aye.
Brian Walker.
Aye.
Mike Casey.
Aye.
Chairman Dravetta.
Aye.
Thank you. I show four zero.
Motion passes. Thank you. Chairman Carol Kelly.
Thank you very much, Chairman Dravetta.
Thank you very much, Chairman Dravetta. At this time, I'd ask our clerk to read item number three.
Resolution Number 2025-2, sitting as the governing Board of Fire District Number Two, hold a public hearing on the proposed budget and to exceed the revenue neutral rate and consider adopting Resolution Number 2025-2, authorizing a levy of property taxes in support of the budget for Fire District Number Two for the fiscal year FY 2026 budget year that requires a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate of 0.534 mils for the Fire District Number Two Debt Service Bond H Fund and 0.753 mils for the Fire District Number Two Debt Service Bond I Fund.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to open a public hearing regarding Resolution Number 2025-2. Invite Jim Francis to provide any kind of presentation at this time or comment.
No comment. Happy to address any, anything the Board would like to speak about.
All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody who would like to comment on Resolution Number 2025-2 on the proposed budget and to exceed the revenue neutral rate may do so at this time. Is there anybody who would like to provide public comment? Okay, I'm not hearing any public comment requests at this time. While this public hearing remains open, is there a motion from the Board? Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair. Sitting as the governing Board of Fire District Number Two, I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2025-3 to approve the fiscal year, fiscal year 2026 budget for Johnson County Fire District Number Two as proposed.
Okay, I think we're on the wrong motion, and so we will abandon that motion and hear a motion from Commissioner Hanslick.
Oh, I'm sorry. I put two.
Sitting as the governing Board of Fire District Number Two, I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2025-2, authorizing a levy of property taxes in support of the budget for the Johnson County Taxing District for the fiscal year 2026 budget year that requires a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate of 0.534 mils for the Fire District Number Two Debt Service Bond H Fund and 0.753 mils for the Fire District Number Two Debt Service Bond One Fund.
Allen Brewer, second.
So moved by Commissioner Hanslick and seconded by Commissioner Brewer. Is there any comments or discussion regarding the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, we have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Then I will close the public hearing. And at this time, ask the clerk to read item number four.
Resolution Number 2025-3, sitting as the governing Board of Fire District Number Two, consider approving and adopting Resolution Number 2025-3 to approve the fiscal year FY 2026 budget for Johnson County Fire District Number Two as proposed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Francis, further presentation or comments you'd like to make at this time?
No.
Thank you very much. Then open for discussion and comments from the Board. Commissioner Allen Brand.
I don't have any comments, but I'm ready for a motion when you're ready.
Go ahead, please.
Sitting as a governing Board of Fire District Number Two, I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 0225-3 to approve fiscal year 2026 budget for Johnson County Fire District Number Two as proposed.
Brewer, second.
So moved by Commissioner Allen Brand. I'd note that this is Resolution Number 2025-3. A friendly amendment there, and so seconded by Commissioner Brewer. Further discussion, comments from the Board. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, we have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good, thank you. And at this time, I'd ask the clerk to read item number five.
Resolution Number 2025-1, sitting as the governing Board of Johnson County Consolidated Fire District Number One, hold a public hearing on the proposed budget and to exceed the revenue neutral rate and consider adopting Resolution Number 2025-1, authorizing a levy of property taxes in support of the budget for Johnson County Consolidated Fire District Number One for the fiscal year FY 2026 budget year that requires a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate of 0.000 for Johnson County Consolidated Fire District Number One General Fund.
Very good. At this time, I will open the public hearing regarding Resolution Number 2025-1 and invite Mr. Francis to provide any presentation at this time.
No additional comments, Chair?
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing regarding Resolution Number 2025-1 for fire, Consolidated Fire District Number One on the proposed budget and to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Are there any comments? Any member of the public who would like to comment on this item is welcome to do so at this time.
Excuse me, Chairman. I would like to note that Charlotte O'Hara signed up but is not in attendance.
Thank you very much. Again, calling on Ms. O'Hara, is she here? She is not. Anyone else who would like to provide public comment? All right, not seeing public comments at this time. At this point, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Brewer.
Sitting as the governing Board of Johnson County Consolidated Fire District Number One, I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2025-1, authorizing a levy of property taxes in support of the budget for the Johnson County Taxing District for the fiscal year 2026 budget year that requires a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate of 0.000 mils for the Johnson County Consolidated, Consolidated Fire District Number One General Fund.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Brewer and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Is there any further discussion regarding the resolution? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, we have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Then at this time, I will close the public hearing. Would the clerk please read item number six?
Resolution Number 2025-2, sitting as the governing Board of Johnson County Consolidated Fire District Number One, consider approving and adopting Resolution Number 2025-2 to approve the fiscal year FY 2026 budget for Johnson County Consolidated Fire District Number One as proposed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Francis, any further comments or presentation at this time?
No further comments, Chair.
Thank you very much. Comments or discussion from the Board? Commissioner Ashcraft.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to offer comment for kind of historical context because as I understand it, this is an unusual meeting or series of meetings based on legal advice and the efforts to consolidate these two districts. So I hope that in the future such formalities will not be necessary, but have wanted to thank that Fire District One Board for their indulgence in service to this point. And as I understand it, by the end of this year, I guess your role will change.
No.
No?
They're going to be on advisory.
But they'll be on advisory, but their role will change in terms of the formality of it, so.
That's correct.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brewer, then Commissioner Allen Brand.
I just wanted to give my thank you to the, to the Board, the Fire District Board, to all the fire staff and our chief, and to Mr. Francis for what has been a very long journey. And I won't say too much more because I know my fellow Commissioner, Commissioner Allen Brand has been much more along this journey than I have, so I'll leave additional comments to her. I will note for Commissioner Ashcraft, I do appreciate the way in which we conducted the hearings today because they are in keeping with what our taxpayers who fall into the district are seeing on their bill. So they're seeing that each section has been deliberated, intentional decision has, hearing has been held, comment has been received, if any was, you know, going to be proffered, and action has been taken. So I'm glad that, I do know that going forward, it will be much more succinct because we won't see it on the bill like that, nor will we conduct the meeting like this. But I, we're consistent in what we're printing and what we're doing, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen Brand.
Commissioner Brewer, thank you for those comments because that, that's exactly true. And thank you for your commitment to the Boards as well. And I'm not going to rehash thanking everybody because you know how much I appreciate it. But I also want to thank Adam Norris, and I want to thank our shared services of Brett Christensen, Budget, Mark Dab, everybody who's participated, and hopefully everything is a little bit better. And with that, Chair, I have a motion when you're ready.
Commissioner Allen Brand, you may have the honor of the motion.
Thank you. Hopefully, I'm going to get the right one. Sitting as the governing Board of Johnson County Consolidated Fire District Number One, I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2025-2 to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget for Johnson County Consolidated Fire District Number One as proposed.
Brewer, second.
So moved by Commissioner Allen Brand for the fiscal year 2026 budget, seconded by Commissioner Brewer. Is there any further questions or comments at this time from the Board? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, we have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Well, then at this time, I would like to pile on and again thank Fire District Board Number One. Thank you all for your accommodation today and for your continued service on behalf of our shared residents. That concludes the items on our agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Please note that the technology does need to change for the continuation of our agenda review. We'll provide 15 minutes for the staff to be able to do so. Fifteen, one, five. See you all at 1:45. Fifteen, 1:05. See you all at 1:45.